I would like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting held on two twenty seven and March first, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes. And we've got three people wishing to address the board on non-agenda topics. Start with Amy Bruin. Please come up and state your name and your address, please.
My name is Amy Bruner, and I'm at thirty four twenty South Alpine. I'm here to comment again on the district's legislative policy positions, which have not been updated to represent actual testimony and the positions taken by the district in peer where it really mattered. I'm referring to House Bill eleven sixty-three and Senate Bill one ninety-three. HB eleven sixty-three would have prohibited the dissemination of obscene material to minors in the public school library. Senate Bill one ninety-three would have established provisions related to the review and selection of instructional materials in school districts and would have made room for parental input. The school district's position is stated as neutral on House Bill eleven sixty-three, the rationale being that the district or the bill has no impact on K-12 education. It has no approved curriculum, has the purpose of appealing to a prurient interest. The school district's position is stated also as neutral on Senate Bill one ninety-three, the rationale being that the school district currently has a process to support the selection of re- and review of instructional materials. Sioux Falls School District lobbyist Sam Nelson testified on February sixteenth of twenty-three at the Senate Education Committee hearing for Senate Bill one ninety-three. He said, and I quote, "I want to provide you with an overview again, much as I did, related to a very similar bill in the House as it relates to the Sioux Falls School District's policy here, and I, why we, think that this bill is unnecessary," unquote. On the House Bill eleven sixty-three guest register registry sign-in sheet, which you have in your packet, and it's on the QR code. Mr. Nelson marked the column to testify against the bill. And the official LRC notes from the legislative hearing, also in your packet, list him as an opponent, not neutral. Similarly, from Senate Bill one ninety-three, the LRC notes listed Mr. Nelson as an opponent to the bill. That's the official state record. If I hadn't been at the committee hearing, I might not have known that the district's proxy spoke against both bills, helping get them killed in committee. Why is the position record listed on the school district website different than the official state record? And what other position statements don't match the way the district was actually represented in peer? It makes me wonder if I need to go listen to all committee hearings to know how the district really stands. What's the purpose of having a legislative position page if it's not kept up to date, accurate, and truthful? Beyond this lack of transparency, I'd like to address the justification the school district gave for taking the neutral position on both bills. For House Bill eleven sixty-three, the school board position says that the bill was unnecessary because, quote-unquote, "no approved curriculum has the purpose of appealing to a prurient interest." Well, that's debatable. According to Webster's New College Dictionary, prurient is defined as having or expressing lustful ideas or desires. I have provided you with a summary from the book Kingdom of Ash by Sarah J. Moss, which is available to Sioux Falls School District middle schoolers by ebook. They can download this book from the school library directly onto their school-issued Chromebooks. For those in the audience, you can access what the board has, like I said, in the QR code. In the interest of public decency, I'm not going to read this out loud, but it sure seems prurient to me. In its reason for being neutral on Senate Bill one ninety-three, the school district position statement says it currently has a process to support the selection and review of instructional materials. Well, we've identified at least one hundred and fifty-two books in the Sioux Falls School District that contain varying degrees of sexual content, profanity, propaganda, and violence that many families find objectionable. That list of books is in the handout I provided you, and that is only the books that we have had time to verify are present in the Sioux Falls School District. There are many more that we have yet to check. So is the process working? Seems like maybe not. My children have inadvertently been exposed to sensitive content from the school library that was inappropriate to their age, maturity, and level of understanding. I'm not looking for a book banning. I'm not asking you to remove books from the libraries. I'm looking for a way to block access to these books in their various forms from my children. By getting back to the legislative position record, I'm asking you today, again, to update the public record. Taxpayers in the district deserve accurate information on where the school district really stands on its positions that impact us and our children, even if the position might cause conflict or consternation with some in the community. We need transparency and accuracy on how our elected bodies are representing us. I look forward to hearing back from you in the next few days on this matter, and I thank you for your time tonight.
All right, next up is Michelle Klemic. Please come up, state your name and address, and you've got five minutes, please.
Michelle Klemic, four four zero one East Harwood Circle, five seven one zero three. When the district approves instructional material that will be made available to students, whether by way of assignment, recommendation, or voluntary choice, I imagine there are standards when making final decisions. Maybe some of the questions we ask are, is the material skill set supportive? Will the text influence students positively or negatively? To what extent could the reader internalize images and texts they're exposed to? Well, experts have established through extensive research, studies, and debates that children do internalize what they read and are negatively impacted when exposed to sexually explicit and violent texts. Peggy Elbers, a professor of language and literacy education in the College of Education and Human Development at Georgia State University, wrote a paper titled, "Why Stories Matter for Children's Reading." She found that, quote, "Stories do not just develop children's literacy. They convey values, beliefs, attitudes, and social norms, which, in turn, shape children's perceptions of reality. I found through my research that children learn how to behave, think, and act through the characters that they meet through stories." Another study titled, "The Association Between Exposure to Violet Pornography and Teen Dating Violence in Grade Ten," high school students, published in the National Library of Medicine, found there are concerns that exposure to sexually explicit material with violent themes may not perceive, may not be perceived as fantasy, particularly among those with limited sexual experience, which could potentially have negative impacts on behavior and expectations for sexual interactions in relationships in real life. One more, research from a publication titled, "The Social Cost of Pornography," a statement of findings and recommendations, found that adolescents are normalizing sexual abuse done to them because of pornographic exposure. Females are especially prone to the normalization of sexual promiscuity, which heightens their risk of being victims of unwanted sexual violence and of sexual transmitted diseases." Let me take a look at this one. Okay, so displayed, I've been displaying images from the twenty-one-volume graphic novel series, "Assassination Classroom." I mentioned this instructional material at our previous meeting. All twenty-one volumes are available at Washington High, Lincoln High, and Jefferson High. Even though it's not at Roosevelt High in the library, my understanding is a student could just do like an interlibrary loan and get those books, so basically all high school students. So throughout the series, text and images can contain explicit violence, profanity, and sexual activities. So questions that would naturally arise is, how does this material support the development of English language skills? How does this material support healthy self-image? So there are set standards outlined in the district-wide school rules for students when dealing with disrespect, sexual misconduct, profanity, and themes such as alcohol, drugs, sex, death, or violence. I'm gonna put up a couple more here. Does the district set the same standards when approving instructional material? What's the message that we send by providing this material? I'm just a little lost on that. If a student brought this type of material to school, it would lead to an infraction. A conflict and contradiction is clearly created. So one more here. This is the graphic novel, "Classroom Assassination." Again, all twenty-one volumes are available, Washington, Jefferson, and Lincoln. So what does being the best district in the nation mean? I don't believe that this is it. Thank you for your time.
All right, next, Chad Bishop. Please come up, you've got five minutes. State your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Chad Bishop. I live at seven four zero five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. I'm here today as a member of the Mini Haha Moms for Liberty chapter. Last time I spoke, I tried to give you all a little homework, asking you to watch a monologue by classical liberal comedian Bill Maher, and then he calls out what he identifies as a woke revolution. The clip's in my notes. It should help you to understand the remaining four minutes and thirty-five seconds. Given that last night was the twenty twenty-three Oscars, I have a fascination, and I have a fascination for artificial intelligence, which is in the classroom already. I don't envy anybody trying to get great essays. I thought this would be appropriate and enlightening, since Kay Hui Kwan, better known as Short Round from Indiana Jones and the Temple of Doom, won Best Supporting Actor for, oh, was my first question to ChatGPT was, how do you pronounce the name of the actor from Indiana Jones and the Temple of Doom? Kay Hui Kwan. It says Kay He Kwan's name, this is ChatGPT, pronounced Kay He Kwan. The first name Ki is pronounced like the English word kay, and the second name Hui is pronounced like hui, and the last name Kwan is pronounced like Kwan. So I had to ask ChatGPT about the Temple of Doom and not everything everywhere all at once, because it has no knowledge of anything since September of twenty twenty-one. Its training data stops there. The model only knows what it is told, kind of like a child. Now, this makes Mr. Kwan the second actor of Asian descent to win an Academy Award for Best Supporting Actor. The other was Ng Som Neng Gor, best remembered for "The Killing Fields" in nineteen eighty-four. How apropos. Here's the rest of my exchange with the AI chatbot instance. "Chad, are you familiar with the movie 'The Killing Fields'?" ChatGPT: "Yes, I am familiar with the movie 'The Killing Fields.' It is a historical drama that was released in nineteen eighty-four and directed by Roland Yoffe. The movie tells the story of Cambodian genocide that occurred during the Khmer Rouge regime in the late nineteen seventies, as seen through the eyes of a Cambodian journalist and his American friend. The film was critical, critically acclaimed, and was nominated for seven Academy Awards, winning three, including Best Supporting Actor for King S. Ngor, who played the Cambodian journalist Di Thph Ron. 'The Killing Fields' is widely regarded as one of the best movies about the Cambodian genocide, and it has had a significant impact on raising awareness about the atrocities that took place during that time." Slightly more complex question. "Do you have familiarity with the storyline, specifically the scene where the child uproots the garden in front of Di Thph Ron?" "Yes, I'm familiar with the storyline of 'The Killing Fields,' including the scene where a child uproots the garden in front of Di Thph Ron. In the movie, Di Thph Ron is a Cambodian journalist working for the New York Times when the Khmer Rouge takes control of the country. He becomes trapped in Cambodia and must struggle to survive the brutal regime. At one point in the film, Di Thph Ron encounters a young child who is uprooting a garden in front of him. The child tells Di Thph Ron that the Khmer Rouge have ordered everyone to destroy anything related to the past, including gardens and other symbols of an old way of life. The scene is poignant reminder of the destruction and the loss of culture that occurred during the Khmer Rouge regime. I've included the link to that clip from the movie here in the notes. One of the quotes, 'They tell us God is dead, and the party they call Anka will provide everything for us.'" "Are you familiar with the scene where Di Thph Ron observes the child marking the chalkboard?" Actually, it got that one wrong, so I had to ask a second question. "Are you familiar with an additional scene where Di Thph Ron observes the Khmer Rouge teaching the children about family, teaching in quotes? It also involves a chalkboard." "Yes, I am familiar with the scene you are referring to in 'The Killing Fields,' where Di Thph Ron observes the Khmer Rouge teaching the children about the family using the chalkboard. In the scene, Di Thph Ron observes a Khmer Rouge cadre teaching a group of children about the new Khmer Rouge concept of family. The cadre writes on the chalkboard and explains that the new definition of family is the group of people who work together for the common good of the nation, rather than the traditional of the family as blood relatives. The scene is a chilling example," this is the AI, "chilling example of the Khmer Rouge's efforts to indoctrinate the next generation with their ideology and erase traditional Cambodian values. It also underscores the importance of education as a tool for resistance and survival during times of war and political upheaval." The importance of education, I would also underscore that. "Are there any comparisons to be made between the cadre of Khmer Rouge in this scene and the Red Guard from the Cultural Revolution in China?" See, Bill Maher. "Yes, there are some similarities between the Khmer Rouge cadre in 'The Killing Fields' and the Red Guard in Cultural Revolution in China. Both the Khmer Rouge and the Red Guard were radical political movements that emerged in the mid-twentieth century and sought to create a new society by erasing traditional values and cultural norms. Both movements relied heavily on indoctrination and propaganda to control the population, particularly the young. This is why we're here. This is why it's so important. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item six, approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion passes, and on to the good news report. Dan.
Thank you for your patience while we get everything set. As you know, we've been featuring our schools once a month during our good news report, and Roosevelt High School, Tim Hazlitt is here to share with us some of the bright spots at Roosevelt High School. There are many, and so I'll invite Tim to come forward.
All right, thanks for having me. It's a pleasure to be here to talk about Roosevelt. There's so much that's going on all the time in any of our high schools. It's hard to, it's kind of nice, actually, to be able to sit down and see, see it in progress a little bit. So, real quick, Roosevelt High School is a place that's, I think one of our biggest strengths is the sense of culture and community that's there, and that's, that's, that's a good thing to see every day when they're there. Starting off with who we are demographically, this is kind of interesting. So in eighteen ninety, I look back, and this was, when I just searched each grade level, our, our population was twenty-five hundred sixteen. That's who we dealt with, but that wasn't the actual funding. But twenty-three hundred, so this year, we're sitting at sixteen ten, so that's, that's an example of what happened when we changed all the, the boundaries. And next year, we'll be going back up to about seventeen hundred and fifty students. So, to see that progress from what happened during, during the changes when Jefferson opened up. So, we are made up of all kinds of kids. One of the things about our high schools is that we have everything in there all the time, every, every group, every, every background, and so it's, it's a great place to be, to be around all these different people. This is, it's, you can't see it too well on there, but there's the demographic break around by, by race again. One of the things that we've done really hard in the last probably seven to eight years was develop our whole school into a professional learning community, and we worked really hard at that. That's an idea of collective responsibility, so our teachers work in collaboration all the time. And when they work together, my example is if there is a biology team working together, and there's a student who might need help that's in my class, but I can't help him at that time, they collectively will work together to try to, to try to help that. That's been awesome to see. It's a whole, it's really the backbone of who we've become as a, as a community at Roosevelt when it comes to academics. The system of interventions that we've had are, have been complex. We're honing them in a little bit more this year. We've been doing those We've been doing those kinds of things for, for years. And one of the things we pride is the idea of having some flexibility in there for kids who have needs that, that might, might not fit the, the regular traditional education system. The focused collaboration, when we go in there, we don't just say, how you doing today and what's going on? We work together on, on four questions. What do we want our students to know and be able to do? What do we, how do we know if they know it? So we're developing our essential standards. We're developing our common formative assessments so that we know how to intervene and what to intervene on. And then what do we do if they don't know it? That's the intervention. And then what do we do if they already know it? And that's the last question of how do we, how do we extend that? How do we get those things to be able to challenge all the students in the classroom? And every group works on those things and to develop those, those elements of collaboration to help our students learn. One of the things that became apparent to me early on when we were working with this, it's hard to get everyone on the same page. But one of the things that became clear is I need to meet with the team leaders. So every month I meet with our team leaders. We go through how to increase their leadership capacity. So they have, and they, so then they can go out and they can work with those teams more effectively. And it's also, it's impossible for us as administration or people to go sit in on those collaborations and it probably shouldn't be done that way anyway. So this is, this is awesome. Those are great meetings to get that, those team leaders together and work on those goals. One of the other things we've done over the last few years is taken ideas from ACT prep and, and figured out where they can fit into our core classes at school. So we have, I know especially in English, they'll work on, here's what you're going to see on the ACT as you go in your daily lesson. So they help work in that all together. It comes out and it's helped us. And the, some more statistics, graduation rates increased, increased three percent in the last five years. We, we went, you can see that little chart over there, it just keeps climbing up. Now this year it might take a little dip because if we're getting through some of the effects of what happened during the COVID year and stuff like that. But that's a lot of work for a lot of people who generally just take action. Like you don't just look at a statistic or look at a student and say, oh, that's the other film, let's try it again. We do stuff all the time. When you look down here, this is kind of interesting in our ACT scores. Again, that's, that's not everyone in the school that takes it, but that's who does take it. And this was just kind of interesting to see in two thousand nineteen and twenty that we were at these scores and we got through some hard times and some changes and everything. And then last year we had, we had increased on almost every one of those areas. So we're really proud of, of the work we're doing in our classes. Some of the things that, that we offer that, you know, is like some things to look at with this. We still have a very strong AP program. I know that a lot of people talk about that idea was is dual credit taking that over? And it's really strong still. So we look at that, we had, there's some numbers on there as far as how many students we had complete exams and how many of them did well. Sixty-four percent got a three or above on their ACTs. Let me excuse me, on their AP course work. So that's, that's staying really strong and steady. We have a lot of students from Roosevelt still attend the CTE Academy. So we have three hundred and nine courses and five hundred eighty-five course requests this year for, for CTEs. So we're able to do these things and then I showed that the dual credit too. So in some ways it's kind of neat because you're able to see you can do it all. If you, you have people in there who have the opportunities to do all those different kinds of pathways that they might need. So I don't think it's necessarily competition in, in any of those as long as you're promoting all of them. So one of the things that has become big in our community, it started a lot and it just, it drew is We Are Roosevelt, We Are One. One of the things that we believe we're the very best at is creating inclusive community culture in our school. The story behind We Are One was started up. Student council members came to me, they wanted to get T-shirts for everyone, said, hey, can we have We Are Roosevelt? And I thought, we need a little more meaning. I said, if you add We Are One, I think we're going somewhere. So then just as simple, we started raising money and, and buy our T-shirts for every student, every staff member, every year on that idea. And we've, we've honed it in a little more to this year with PBIS to say, what does it mean to be one a little bit? But a lot of kids get it. It's a pretty simple concept, but it really is caught up. So one of the things that we said is we're a school that never, that strives to never run out of options for our students. We need to be flexible. That was an easy answer. Somebody said, well, what is the perfect school once? And I said, one that never runs out of options. We gotta have, we gotta have something next. We gotta have that so that we can help these kids learn what they need to learn and be prepared. So one of the things that you hear about maybe our two program, I presented years and years ago at the board, and that's really just individualized education with our own curriculum. So that's, it solves two problems, I'll go fast. Two of the problems, when I first became a principal, I didn't know what to do with kids who don't attend and we still have that problem. What do you do with kids who don't attend? And what do you do with kids who are sitting in a class with a miserable, failing grade for the rest of that semester? And I had, so there's got to be something better than just sit there and hope you learned something and try again later. So one of the things that this does is help students learn at their own pace. They can, they can go out there, they have a teacher working with them. And the best part about that is there are some legitimate people, or challenges for some people to come to school sometimes. So they come back and now they're not behind the thirty other kids who have already moved on for three days. They're, they're right where they left off. And then we take away the, the arbitrary timelines of, of a quarter or a semester. We can move that along and it can keep going and progress. Some move faster, some move slower, but it's a, it's a, it's a good learning tool to be used. So we have a lot going on. We started two new programs here recently. This year we're, we're getting our Air Force JROTC off the ground and we're growing. We have to be at a hundred students by the third year. And this next year we're going to be over fifty-five, I think. And so we're moving in the right direction. We did hire a second, we have two people working in that program now, so it's, that's excellent. And it's a, it's been fun, it's been fun to see. Once they get those uniforms on, they're going to be out there and more kids will be attracted to it. And JAG, of course, jobs from American graduates has been really strong at, at Roosevelt. And it's a, it's fun to see how that's evolving. That program is, is geared for all ranges of students and we're starting to have more people become attracted to that. And lastly, some of you probably saw this part on the news, but this is some of the results of the overall culture and idea of inclusivity and believing in each other and having our, our motto be We Are One. We were recognized a couple of weeks ago by ESPN and Special Olympics as being a nationally unified champion school. And we had a really fun celebration. It was one of the best, best assemblies I've ever been a part of there and really proud of the entire student body for the support. That's all I had, unless anybody has any questions.
I just thought maybe you were going to sing for us. But I guess not. But I just want to thank you because you've had the most changes, I think, over these years with boundaries, with, you know, adding Jefferson on. You know, that was the school that we took most from families changing and so forth. And I just remember going to your school when you had twenty-five hundred students and all, you know, starting classes early before school and going late just to accommodate everybody in Roosevelt till we got the new building open and then having to have staff to leave because now staff follows students, of course, and so forth and all that. So thank you for all you've done through all these transitions and maintaining the success and being adaptable. I just really appreciate it.
I appreciate that a lot. That those are, those are real things, real emotions tied with relationships. And it's, it's, it's a hard thing to go through, but we're, we're, we're coming back strong. Thank you for noticing that.
I was just going to add, I, I love the idea of meeting with team leaders. And I think that not just for you as an administrator to kind of know what's going on, but also from a teaching perspective, there's only so many leadership opportunities that teachers can have access to. And if you're not, maybe a department chair. What, what else can you do, you know? And so I think what an amazing opportunity for students or for teachers to be able to get additional development, additional experience, leadership experience. Maybe some of them will be inspired to go on and get their masters or beyond that because they've enjoyed that piece of it. And so I think that's a great way to invest in our staff as well and to build their skills, not just as teachers, but also as peers to their coworkers as well. And I do, you didn't mention it, but I do know that you guys are also either the first or the only home of the all abilities show choir too. And I've seen amazing performances and great reviews about that too. So what a, what a thing to be proud of for your school. I am a, I'm alumni of Roosevelt, so a little bit biased. But yes, it's a great school and I have attended many events and I love the, the culture. And you can hear them, you know, you'll hear one kid yell, We Are Roosevelt, and you'll hear the entire crowd yell, We Are One. And I just think it is a unifying cheer, it's a unifying slogan, but it's not just something people say, it's something that they live out every day too. So it's nice work on your part.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thanks so much.
Thanks for your time.
All right, we did not have any new conflicts of interest this month. So we're moving on to item nine, approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion passes. And we've got item ten, supplemental consent agenda for claims to Sanford. Can I get a motion in a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. That motion passes with one abstention from board member Ryder. On to the reports of the superintendent.
Yes, thank you. Tonight we have a few different reports. And starting us off is Elizabeth Chenagary. And we're going to be talking about early childhood. And I was trying to remember if you've given a board report since I've been here. I don't think so.
I don't think since you've entered.
Our littlest learners, it's awfully fun if you visit our preschool classrooms. And we know that this is an area that's also been in the spotlight for our community with childcare. And so we look forward to hearing your report.
No, thank you so much for having me. Absolutely. So our Sioux Falls School District programming, what I think is really important to highlight is that we provide services to over twelve hundred children and families within our district each year. And we are funded on a blended funding stream. So we have our BERTA three services for our youngest children. And then we also are the grantee of our Head Start grant. So we provide slots for four hundred and fourteen children that meet that eligibility requirement. We utilize, very fortunate through the school district to utilize our Title I funding for two hundred and seventeen slots. And then as well as migrant thirty-four. And then the special education, not limited and put that on those because have to serve them all the time. And then another unique thing that we started this last year is our community-based services. And that's really targeting those students that are already in some sort of an early childhood programming and really looking at it from a lens of, are they receiving a lot of those good, you know, high-quality services at a place? And do we have to, you know, create, you know, additional, you know, transitions and things for them? So the child may be in their home and may not just be ready, could be a unique circumstance, not be ready to come to one of our early childhood classrooms. It could be in our already highly qualified or high, high-quality community childcare or another preschool or even private preschool program. So that has taken off. We are currently serving about fifty, fifty kiddos within the community, which then we know opens up spots, additional spots within our program for those that maybe have more significant needs where we can really target and support that. So it's very exciting that that has taken off and we're doing great with that. So we are in nine or nine elementary buildings currently. And then next year we're very excited that we will be moving from Susan B. Anthony, not excited about moving, but it's always, you know, good, but moving to Lowell. And then as well that we will be transitioning from Terry Redlin and to the newly opened classrooms out at the Learning Lab. So we're really excited about that newly renovated space out there. So we'll still be at the nine locations, just a shift between those two. So we're very fortunate in our community that we also receive funding from the Sioux Empire United Way. And that is with the Preschool Opportunity Program. It's located at Robert Frost and we currently have sixty-eight available slots. And we target those on the Head Start and Title waiting list. And then additionally, we have our fee-based program called the Learning Adventures preschool. And that is located at Discovery, John Harris and Sonia Sotomayor. And that has room for eighty-five slots within those programs. Beginning in the fall, LAP, that Learning Adventures preschool and the Preschool Opportunity Program will blend. So we are going to begin offering those slots, not only just at Robert Frost for the Preschool Opportunity Program, but also within John Harris, Discovery. John Harris, Discovery, Robert Frost. Yep. So we're really excited about that because currently the Preschool Opportunity Program only offers those slots at Robert Frost. So we're going to be able to meet the needs of those students on that Head Start waiting list that might live on the west side or might even live a little more south, you know, south central. And we are also going to be able to increase seventeen slots by doing that because currently, right now, we only have an AM section at John Harris. So we'll be adding that PM session to increase that. And then to more closely align with our district early childhood program, our blended program, we're going to increase the student day by thirty minutes. So going from three-hour sessions to three and a half. We're going to provide opportunities for home visits with families. And then the staff in both those programs will have opportunities to participate in all of our early childhood and services. So we're really excited. And then another big project that we have taken on this year is the program-wide implementation of the pyramid model. And the pyramid model, like PBIS, is a tiered intervention support. So you'll see down at the bottom, it's the universal promotion for all children. So that is that high-quality supportive environments and that nurturing and responsive relationship, so all children. And then that secondary is that prevention. So that might be for some of our, some of our children who might need more targeted supports or interventions. And then that top tier is that intensive intervention. And at the base of the pyramid is, is that effective workforce that we're guided towards. So I did just talk a lot about that. It's that tiered approach aimed at providing those universal supports for all children, promoting that wellness and layering those services for those who might need it. And the pyramid model, when we talk about PBIS, is the framework of practices within that PBIS model. And it's really, it's, it's just aimed and targeted for those younger learners. So as I said before, the, yep, these are our kiddos. So the foundation of the pyramid is that effective workforce. Again, those evident-based practices within that nurturing responsive relationships, high-quality supportive learning, and then that targeted supports and interventions. So in the pyramid model, these are, these are kids from our all-day Head Start program. And this is wonderful. I found this resource actually on the news one night a couple of years ago. And when kids come in, somebody can be identified. So it's just an apron and how they get that role for the day. They can either choose to get a high five, a fist bump, a hug, a thumbs up, or just a wave on how to welcome kids. But again, just again, building those practices. So the critical elements of the pyramid model is establishing a leadership team. So we have established a leadership team and a core leadership team. We had kicked off the school year with staff buy-in, did a big introduction presentation on what this was going to look like, what our PD plan and overall goal was to kick this off. Of course, family engagement, we can't do this without having families, you know, as the first teachers for, for our students and, and getting their buy-in as well. We've established program-wide expectations. We've created a PD and staff support plan, established a coaching system. And then of course, that monitoring implementation and outcomes. So this will just give you a snapshot of what our teaming structure looks like. So we do have that core leadership team that I talked about. And we meet monthly and we design the systems and supports to focus on those critical components. And then we also have the leadership team that meets monthly as well to review what we've done and where we need to go next. And then new to the program is our area collaboration. We've always had collaboration, but we call it area because we combine different sites with each other. So they're learning from different professionals. And then we're really drilling in and digging down to these practices. As a program, we have a mission statement and it's together with families, we create and nurture young children's growth. And we have also created what I've talked about, those program-wide expectations. And it's be kind, be safe, and be ready to learn. And you've probably heard a lot about these program-wide expectations that are even in our elementary, you know, middle and high. A lot of them are very similar. And throughout the day, so the teachers, when we say that all staff have been trained, this is including the EAs. And we even came together and they developed this matrix. This is, this is all teacher and educational assistant, behavior specialist, coaches-driven. And what we want to do is identify those common area expectations we talk about or rules. So when we have our expectations on the left, you'll see the be safe, be kind, be ready to learn. And we want to, we want children to know when we're in the hallway, what does it mean to be safe? When we use that, when we talk about that, when we use that terminology, we need to teach them about what that means. And then what, what does it mean to be kind? And then what does it mean to be ready to learn? So these matrix have been developed for the common areas, but then also for every part of the classroom. I didn't load all of those, but it's great, you know, within the work area, within the lunch area. It's wonderful to break it down and have that visual support for the children and staff. Another example of what the teams created was that program-wide expectations. So during cleanup, these are posters that are posted within each area. So when we're cleaning up, we have to remember that to be safe when we clean up, we know that our bodies are calm. we clean up, we know that our bodies are calm. So again, we reference back to that expectation and then apply it to what it could look like. You know, our ears are listening and we need to work together. And the meals was just another example. Couple pictures just showing, there is the teacher reviewing. So before they were going to go to work time, she talks about the expectations when we're at work. What do we do? We go through it just continually, you know, reminding them of what it is practicing and demonstrating. And then even better, it's just a little visual representation for a child on, you know, the steps and process for how to put the snow gear on. That's a lot of fun. Another example of how teachers have gotten extremely creative is the visual schedule on the left. So that's the breakdown of the teacher day, the greeting time, lunch, when we brush our teeth. And they put them on, they got them from one of the Dollar Trees. It's like a, like a little paddle. It reminds me of a ping pong paddle, but they're really just kind of cheap, you know, laminated pieces of board and then they can carry it around. So on one side is the schedule and then on the other sides are those expectations that are eyes around the teacher. We have our listening ears and it's portable. It's just amazing the things that they've done and just taken it, taken off. Here is this in action, the schedules and routines and how we teach children and how we continue to remind them and go over them and practice every day, all the time. Cut just a couple. Let's not. It was really great. She went, it was like the perfect. Like, I know, but when I clicked on it, it wants me to log in. Yeah. So this teacher, it was perfect. The kids were transitioning to snack time and it was, she talks about the two things that the children have to do and just reminded them, what we're going to do is we're gonna wash our hands and then we're gonna sit down. And she just repeated the steps and then went through and as kids, I see your body's calm, I see you're ready. Here's another great example of a problem-solving board and how they teach children to solve their own problems and work through it and give them options. There's even little toolkits that they, kids can dig in and find a timer. They can, you know, find one of the cards. They could get a teacher, they could ask a friend. There's just a lot of different creative things that they can do. So how are we measuring fidelity with this? How do we know with, you know, what we're doing is working? We are utilizing the teapot, which is that teaching pyramid observation tool. And then it, it's going to measure the fidelity of the practices and it's going to tell us how well the teachers are doing incorporating these and teaching it. It identifies those strengths in those areas of additional coaching or needs as well as professional development and then it will guide our continuous improvement plan. There are five of us that have been trained as, to be, to utilize the teapot in the classrooms, to score it and then work with the teachers on that. And then we have established, the leadership team that has established 80% as that fidelity mark of what we want our program to be at, 80% of the practices identified. Currently, so we've only been in round one of the teapot observations. So we did that in the fall and the winter and mind you, this was before we had even fully gone through Pyramid Training One and there's three. So we're just, just this last inter time, we did our, we just started two. And we are at, you'll see down kind of the middle and the bottom, 69%. So 69% of the practices are being implemented with fidelity. And one through seven are really those main components of Pyramid Model One that we've been really targeting hard this, this first part of the year and now that we're getting into the spring. So those, if we did it again, round two that we're going to do here and start in a couple of weeks, we completely suspect that those will increase and be better. And then it doesn't, it doesn't really surprise us to see that that teaching, that the behavior expectations and the problem solving and the challenging behavior. And that comes more at the module three, which we'll dig in through next year. That's really exciting. This is just another way to look at it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just gonna add two things.
Yeah.
So I love that one of the changes is that your staff gets to attend in services with the rest of the early childhood staff or other teaching staff because what a great way to have them see what an impact their role with these early childhood students makes on getting them into an actual classroom that's, has a lot of structure. So that's great, a great opportunity for that staff. And then I just love the expectation setting. I think that so many times maybe parents, and I was guilty too, is like you tell your kids to be kind or be safe or whatever it might be, but they don't know what that looks like. And so it's hard as an adult to remember that you have to give them more than just that. And so I think the work that your team is doing is really going to be seen, not just probably in kindergarten and first grade and making life easier for those student or for those teachers who don't have to maybe wrangle cats all day, you know, like try to get everyone in the same spot, you know, because they'll have, they'll have an understanding of what expectations mean. But also even at home, you know, and hopefully they'll have a better idea at home or going out into public with their parents. Like they'll know, I need to be safe. I need to be, you know, like they start to hear those things and they start to internalize them and understand and see what they mean. I know that what you did to me wasn't kind and I know that. And so now, you know, so I just, I feel like those are such important social, emotional skills that unfortunately, when a lot of our students spend a lot of time on technology or maybe spend a lot of time either unsupervised or undersupervised, they don't get to learn those skills. And so what a great positive place for them to be reminded and to be learning about those important aspects of the rest of their life. So thank you for that.
No, I know. And then we just, like I said, just did the in-service and it was on friendship, building friendship skills and buddies and just how you teach that and get, I know, it is. And instead of just you need to be a friend, what does it mean to be a friend? And how do you be a friend? And yeah, it's, it's been, it's been wonderful. It's been a wonderful change and staff are really buying into it. So it's exciting.
Well, given that students are reading by the end of kindergarten.
Yeah.
It really opens up their bandwidth to learn with the fundamental foundational things that part was talking about, that they're learning. And it's so critically important that we have this free preschool and pre-kindergarten instruction.
Yeah, we are very, very, very fortunate in Sioux Falls to have the blended program. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Can I get a motion in a second to acknowledge the early childhood programming report?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Dr. Knoll.
Good evening. This evening I bring to the proposed boundary changes, the second half of those are proposed boundary changes that I presented from February. The purpose of the report is to obviously go through the recommendation of the final two of the four proposed school boundary changes for your review and approval. This hits into four specific areas, our priority areas, our academic success, wellbeing, community engagement, and the effective use of our resources. This part of it is an extension of the information that was presented to you in the February 1st School Board Work Session. And it was four areas are proposed to you at that time. This is precipitated by the significant movement of the families to the Rosa Parks Elementary School area. We also did have their Renberg last time, but this one will today be specifically with the Rosa Parks Elementary School area. And with the proposed changes, the enrollment at Rosa Parks will better maintain those capacity limits that we had set through our boundary changes. Part of this is also because of the significant impact of the growth within the city of Sioux Falls. So just as a reminder again, the growth that we saw, especially with the apartments, it's not just solely due to that, the single-family housing, that's usually a little easier to estimate the growth in that area. But we also had that significant growth with the record number of apartments built in 2021. And as you can see, that was almost doubled in 2022 with a new record set and they're seeing that extension this year as well, as they're going into that growth area. Most of this hit on the extreme east and west sides, that northwest area and then the straight east area. And so tonight, as I said, we will go into specifically the Rosa Parks area again here. The following steps were completed as we went through this whole process of the boundary changes and I'll go through those with you. These are the same steps that we took with the last proposal that we came forward with. First of all, the current information in the, on the significant numbers, those we received from the city of Sioux Falls, we went through that information. So we could really see where that growth area was. The second thing, we determined that it was going to exceed the capacity numbers that we had for Rosa Parks and Renberg last time that we came through. A proposal was created and that was presented to you at that February Board Work Session. After that, we went to the administrators of those schools so we could make sure each one of the school administrators knew that there was going to be changes that would impact their schools. After that, we talked to the staff that were going to be impacted and then that sixth area presented that information at the Board Work Session. At that point in time, we turned to the parent information and communication. After that work session in February, we did go through with a messaging email and a parent letter. The informational letters had that information in it, but we also followed it up with an email. There was phone calls that were utilized and sent out to multiple groups, especially our EL families. We did have parent informational sessions as well, where we had been invited to Rosa Parks where we could sit down and meet with them and go through some of that information and answer their questions. Our EL liaisons went out and met with our parents and students specifically. We also utilized our social workers to help in some of that process as well. We had the public input sessions that were shared or the information that was shared by the public at our school board meetings and then the media reporting and our Let's Talk correspondence was also utilized and we responded to those. The information gained was used to make informed decisions. You saw some of those changes we had made to the proposals at the last meeting where we went through with Renberg and part of Rosa Parks. And then we bring forward tonight for the consideration of those final changes. You can see here, and I'll just read through that part of it, but the first area, there's going to be two areas that we talk about tonight. The first one is an area that will impact students that go from Rosa Parks to Susan B. Anthony. That same area will impact middle school where it will go from Ben Rifle Middle School to Patrick Henry and will impact the high school where it goes from Washington to Lincoln. And so the area impacted there, I'll read that demographic area. It's the west of Cleveland Avenue, south of 18th Street and north of 26th Street. So it's that bust area that we have that would go to Rosa Parks and I'll show you a map of that coming up here shortly. But that area there also impacted the middle school and the high school. And so we did the communication all the way through with the middle schools and the high schools. And you'll see here, that area is the area that is furthest to the left. It is that small area in pink and that will go over to the Susan B. Anthony attendance area for elementary and then obviously for Patrick Henry and Lincoln High School. So that's that first proposed area. Some of the things that we also did work out on this through some of the informational sessions and conversations, we did also include that our fourth grade students that would be fifth graders next year, they would have that opportunity to stay at Rosa Parks if their families decided. There would be busing still to Susan B. Anthony, but if they wished to be grandfathered in with the open room, we would provide that. We also did at the middle school level. So the incoming fifth graders, which would be sixth grade next year and the current sixth and seventh graders would also be allowed to stay at Ben Rifle if their family chose to. But we would provide that busing to the Patrick Henry area from that location. And then again, our current ninth through 11th graders and that incoming eighth grade class would also be allowed to stay at Washington High School if they chose to. And we, again, there was where most of our social workers and administration at each of the schools made individual contacts with each one of those. So we can try to make sure we knew what their family decision was. And then we followed up and made those changes for them. So that was part of the agreement we had through this boundary change process. The second area that we'll look at tonight hits an area that is much further to the east. And I'll go through the area that this encompasses. It's first of all, east side of Highway 11, south of 33rd and that attendance area that currently goes to Rosa Parks. So east of Highway 11 and south of 33rd. And then we go on the west side of Highway 11 and south of 41st Street. The reason that was selected, it really helps to split up some of that new growth and new areas in there that's being developed at this point in time. And so part of that stayed in attendance at Rosa Parks and we took part of that growth and moved it to the Harvey Dunn area. Harvey Dunn would have five classrooms that would be open at this time to be able to accommodate that growth. And so that's the area that's being impacted there. I'll show you here on the photo of that area. It's the part that's going to be in the bottom right-hand corner of your screen. And that area there would be moved to the Harvey Dunn and that would be a bust area. We did again, through the conversations, we're able to, especially through the parent meeting, go through and talk with the parents on some of the concerns that they had so that we could help to eliminate some of those and also to identify some areas that we maybe did not take into consideration and reconsider those things. And so as you look through this, again, we had those fourth grade students, that was part from the very start that we had agreed upon, allowed them to be able to stay as well as their siblings. And that would be a bust area to Harvey Dunn, but if they wished to open a roll, they could attend there. There's a few that took advantage of that. We also identified our two-way immersion students that were currently attending at Rosa Parks so we could maintain that program. So those individuals will maintain their enrollment at Rosa Parks. They'll be able to take that fee-based busing, but we'll provide that. That is not listed in there, but we made an agreement where they'll be able to have the transportation. And so they'll still be able to get there. Their parents would not have to worry about that transportation piece for them and their families. One other thing that came up, there's a few individuals that had moved there after the start of the two-way immersion. So the older sibling maybe could not get started in two-way immersion because they were not a kindergarten student, but yet their younger sibling was able to do that as a kindergartner. So we did work out that the older siblings of those who are currently attending at Rosa Parks in that two-way immersion could also attend. So we tried to look at those different angles. That last one was part that came through some of the informational sessions that we had with the parents. So we decided to add that in there as well. So the summary of this, due to the significant increased enrollment of students at Rosa Parks Elementary, the district is proposing the changes in boundaries to move students to schools in the district that have capacity to accommodate that growth. And I identify those two different areas. The administrative recommendation is to approve the recommended boundary changes with the agreed-upon processes for specific groups of students that have the option of maintaining their current enrollment. And I will stand by for any questions.
No questions for Dr. Knoll?
Just really appreciate the follow-up with the families to identify issues that might have been missed through the process and try to accommodate them. It really shows that you guys are interested in making that.
Thank you. It was really good meetings with the parents and great to hear some of the feedback and they had some great ideas and we tried to work through that process to be able to solve some of those for them. So thank you.
I'm glad we're keeping that student-teacher ratio, one of which is conducive for great learning in the classroom. So way to accommodate our growth.
I just want to add, we also had school-level staff. As soon as they learned about the boundary changes, they were at those parent meetings to help incoming families feel welcome. And so we were just really appreciative of that and really stepped up.
Yeah. And it was teachers and liaisons, administrators were there, but there was a good group of individuals that wanted to come and represent their school so that some of the families that were there, they could talk to them and reassure them of the great things at their school. So it was really good to see that.
Thank you very much. Good process overall, I think. All right. We have a, can I get a motion in a second to approve the proposed boundary changes?
Go ahead.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That passes. Thank you. And on to policies and regulations. Get to the podium because you don't have a mic.
Thanks.
Kick to the kids' table again.
So I'm bringing forward five policies on behalf of the Policy Review Committee tonight. One is on a second reading from last month and then the other four on a review revised. So that'll just, they'll just be on tonight. So for the first, on the second reading, you'll remember we had last month, the policy, making some updates to the graduation requirements to account for the state-level changes that were made several years ago. We received no comments on that. So I'd ask that you approve the second reading and adoption of the changes in this policy IKF.
So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
And then finally, we And then finally, we have four policies up on a review revised tonight. Those policies are JICA for student personal property, JLIC for student safety patrols, KLG for relations with law enforcement authorities, and then finally, LD, on-campus recruitment for colleges, universities, and the military. The first policy, JICA, there's no changes. And then in the other three, there are just minor reference changes with no substantive changes. So with that, I'd ask that you approve the review revision of those four policies.
So moved. Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Let's pass. Thank you. All right. Anything else for, good for the order? All right. Can I get a motion in a second to adjourn, please?
Go move.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Yeah.